Thanks for being here. As you might imagine, you know, from the work that's happened here, starting in 1927 through today, there's been lots of, lots of changes. I mean, at one point, this, this building was taking care of veterans who didn't have a place to go after World War I. And it just really has a history and the organization has transformed itself over the years. And I think it's fair to say that we're going through another transformation now, our most recent transformation, and it likely won't be our last as we try to be responsive to trends that change and happen all the time. I was visiting with a businessman out in the community the other day, and he was asking about some of the things we're doing differently. And wow, I guess that's a pretty, you know, that's a pretty big change. And I said, well, you know, if somebody came to you and said, you know, either your product wasn't relevant anymore, or the way you were selling your product wasn't relevant anymore, would you close your doors or would you transform and try to be responsive to a market that still has great needs for what you do? And the answer was, well, I transform and still try to be responsive to a market that has great needs for what we do. I said, that's what we're doing too. And I think it's, I think it's fair to think about it that way. So really, almost all elements of what we do, we're doing new and we're doing, we're doing fresh. I like to start with the work because without the, without the work we do, there's no reason really for us to be here. So I like to, to start with that. You know, there, there is great demand and a number of you are, are joining us in this work that we do in the community, and there's, there's great demand for what we, and specifically what our nonprofit partners do. We stepped back a couple of years ago to take a look at our community impact, listen to the community, meet with our nonprofit partners, meet with, with people who are recipients of our, our service, meet with community leaders, donors, and talk about what are the needs in the community and what is the community, and what do people think the needs are? Are people willing to fund? And how can we bring those things together? And we rolled out a new community impact strategy. It's not going to be surprising to any of you. You can determine whether somebody is going to be successful in our community, or at least you can, you can evaluate the odds of them being successful in our community if you know their income, or their race, or what part of our city they live in. Okay? Those three things are huge determinants in whether a person will be successful. And those are where some of the greatest disparities exist and where the greatest inequities exist among, among the people that are living with us here in the Twin Cities. And so first and foremost, our, our work is focused on working to break down those inequities and really make it a place where everybody has an opportunity to be successful and thrive. So that's, that's really what we're focused on. And then in doing that, our focus areas right now are household stability, which is food security and housing, education, and then economic success, mostly but not entirely around jobs. Okay? So that's essentially where we're focused on. And, and everybody, and I talked about our, our transition, you know, in the early days of United Way, it was people walking neighborhoods. That's how they raised the money. They went door to door, you know, mostly women, red hats, boxes, community chest, raising money door to door. And then, and then we evolved to where we were workplace campaigns. You know, that's what we do. We run, we run campaigns in the workplace. That's still where we raise most of our money. And most people understand that from that money, we made a series of grants to the nonprofit community. All true. But if you only understand about United Way, if you know, if you understand two things, we do workplace campaigns, and we know that people are getting, employees are getting differently in the workplace now than the way they used to, different things interest done, different, what different rules of engagement exist with that group. So if you understand that, and if you understand that that's how we raise our money and we give that all away, then you start to challenge the model and want to know how we're transforming. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk now, you know, I talked about, I talked about our work, but I talked about it only from the perspective of the grants that we make. And so I also like to talk to people about the work that we do to make the entire community a better nonprofit and more successful nonprofit community, of which making these grants in these focus areas is one thing. But some of the things that other people know less about than we do are our advocacy program. Okay? So we have a very, very active advocacy program where each year we determine what our agenda's going to be. You know, in a funding year, it's about securing funding for the focus areas that I just mentioned. Last year, we either led coalitions or participated in coalitions that successfully advocated for bringing up over $90 million into those focus areas that we just talked to. So the areas around childhood, our education, primarily early childhood education, housing, and jobs. Now it's a, now it's a, you know, it's not, it's not a budget year, it's not a funding year, so our, our advocacy agenda is largely focused around policy and, and working to really set the stage for what we want to accomplish next year. And so, but that's a really active part of what we do, and it really goes on year, year round. And that's an opportunity for us to really get at some of the systems and policies and things that create the inequities that we're trying to disrupt and, and make it easier for people to be successful in, in the Twin Cities. So that's, that's really important work. Most people don't know, do you all know we operate a call center, that we have what we call our 211 call center? So we have a call center out in Bloomington that's open 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, where it is a referral system for people who need help now. Okay? It keeps them from having to navigate the nonprofit sector, the government sector, and it gets them to someplace that can provide whatever help they're needing at the time. Not surprisingly, right now, over 50% of the phone calls that come into the call center are housing related. We're all hearing about the housing shortage, so it helps to connect them to someplace that can, all the way from provide short-term housing to long-term solutions to somebody who's going to get evicted the next day if they don't have a rent check. So it makes all those kinds of refer, or campaigner utilities, connects them with somebody that can help them with that, with those utilities. But we referred 275,000, we had 275,000 referrals that came out of that call center last year. And then we, we also have held a number of different sessions where we're trying to identify gaps in the community, places where maybe a need isn't being met and match, and match it with funders who might be interested in funding something. And so outside of our workplace campaigns, okay? So we're developing these innovative products, and one of them I'll talk about, and we know we can do this because we, we tried it, okay? Like kidding, in 2015, when we had our, our 100 year anniversary celebration, we, we raised money in a way we'd never raised money before, and that was raising money through, through large donors, corporate foundations, outside of workplace campaigns or workplace relationships to create the community capital fund. And, you know, we, we didn't know whether we could raise money that way. We went in with a bowl of $8 million, and we raised $22 million for that particular fund. And that allowed us to try some things we've never done before, one of which was is career academies. So career academies is a program where we bring together nonprofits, school districts, funders, experts in the industry to establish career pathways in high schools. Okay? So we have, we have career academies up and running now in 15 school districts. We've developed a total of 35 different career pathways. They don't all operate in every school district. We work with the community to determine what the interests of the students are, what are the needs in the community, what are the employment opportunities in that particular area, and develop relevant pathways for that particular location. And we just started this program four years ago, 15 school districts, 35 pathways, and over 5,000 kids have gone through the program. It increases the high school graduation rates. Many of them graduate with some sort of employment certification right off the bat, whether it is healthcare, or IT, or construction, or if they are focused on a career pathway that, that has a post-secondary requirement, then it, then it makes sure that they're getting what they need out of high school, ready to go into college, and frequently they're graduating from high school already with tuition credits that can be applied to whatever they're getting ready to go do. Over 5,000 kids just in four years. And the other thing that's cool about career academies is that it is sustainable. Once we get it up and running in the school district, we continue to monitor and advise, but we don't fund anymore. Okay? It's up and sustainable, and the new money that we raise for career academies is to start at individual school systems. We did a similar program in, a food program in North Minneapolis where we knew, for example, that General Mills, that's one of the pillars of their foundation is food and food security. So we developed a program with them called Full Lives to, to work on food security in North Minneapolis. I was leading to that detail. But that program was successful, and General Mills wanted to take it to other locations where General Mills operates. And so we worked in partnership with our Buffalo United Way to start Full Lives in a neighborhood in Buffalo. Again, successful. And when that was done, now we're working with our, with our United Way in Toronto and kicking off Full Lives in Toronto. So again, sustainable and being replicated around the country. I was talking to one of, I use this line all the time, which by the way, if you tell me something today, I'm likely to use it sometimes, whether or without attribution. But anyway, so I was talking to one of our board members, and we were talking about United Way, and they're a, they're a multi-location, actually a global company, and he said, you know, one of the things I really like about United Way is you can be local everywhere we are, and that Full Lives example is a great, is a great example of how we can be local everywhere our companies are and can facilitate their work regardless of where, of where they're at. And so those are a couple of examples of programs that we've done, and we have three or four that are in development right now, which kind of gets me then to raising money. Okay? So I talked about our work. Any questions about our work? I didn't do everything. I didn't talk about the volunteerism that we do. I didn't, I didn't talk about everything. People tell me I go on too long, I start to level the message, so I'll try not, I'll try not to level the message, yeah?
I'm just curious, in your work, specifically with the vocational path of those schools, how do you collaborate with, like, achieved Minneapolis and some of these other organizations doing similar or maybe different? And then how do you determine, like, direct coordination across some of your partners that have overlap and maybe need to run out of it?
Yep. So you, you have asked the question, it may not be the first, the most, it's probably the second most frequent question I got, I get. And that, and it's around, it's around that, it's around housing, I get it around early childhood, everybody's working in early childhoods. Who is, who is kind of providing the umbrella services that make sure that we're collaborating, not, not, and I'll tell you, some places that happens pretty good. This one is one we're, we're talking about. We are part of an organization called Generation Next, which is a high school, what's it, I'm sorry, K through 12 collective impact organization. And we're looking at, in fact, expanding the role of Generation Next to bring that kind of oversight together so that there is somebody that really is looking at that, and we're looking to do this, to do the same thing in early education. That's one of the things that United Way ought to be able to do because of our broad coverage in the community and this great community knowledge we have, but it's something that's not happening well enough. But we're really focused on finding out where are those places where we can be the hub organization and make sure that kind of collaboration is happening. So I don't have a great answer for that except to say it's on our radar. We won't, we won't be the person that coordinates everything, but I'm looking at what are the couple places where we can and should be. And the two are these activities around education, which I'd like to do, and we kind of have, already have a vehicle for doing that, maybe through Generation Next. And then I think early childhood, where we have always been a leader, would be a good place for us to be kind of a, say, backbone organization. That is a technical term if you're working in collective impact, but the organization that is the oversight and coordinating and collaborating organization. Anything else? Yes?
I'm with the Minnesota Association for Volunteer Administration, very long. So would you mind touching just a little bit on the work you do with volunteers?
Yes. So, you know, volunteerism is, is really, I'm sorry, reach is required here, right? But it's really, really, it's super, super important for all kinds of reasons. It's really important because volunteerism is a, has become a really key part of the way people want to engage. Okay? It used to be, you know, I was telling somebody yesterday, I grew up in the 80s, we wanted to work. If people needed something, we would rather write a check and work. That's what we wanted to, that's what we wanted to do, you know? That's, that's what I wanted to do when I got out of college was work. And I'm not saying people don't want to work now, but they want to engage differently in their communities than the way I wanted to engage when I was 20 or 30 years old. And so volunteerism is a really, really key important to engaging people, bringing them along in community engagement, and hopefully developing that next generation of, of not just community leaders, but philanthropists that have a, that have giving that is based in this long history of community engagement. So volunteerism and, and individual engagement in general is, is a key platform in our long range strategy, and we do it in a number of ways. First of all, we know that at, at our corporate partners, what's most important to them around their community engagement activities from an employee perspective is how it contributes to overall employee engagement. Okay? It is a key aspect. You know, there is, there's training, there's all these different things that they can do, and they can offer, you know, community engagement opportunities as a component to their overall employee engagement plan. And so we work with our corporate partners to understand what that means, and if that means volunteering, there are ways that we help them with their own volunteer programs. We have on our website, a Volunteer United website where it can, it helps, it talks about what volunteer initiatives are available in the city. It's got a matching function that allows you to go in and put what you're interested in, what the opportunities coming up are. So sometimes it's just, it's just volunteer specific, you go in and decide what you want to do, or you plan an activity for your company and we'll help with that. And then we also do three major volunteer events of our own every year. And this, and it's tied to our work. So we split the year up in trimesters. So the first trimester is around food security, and we tie it into kids getting ready to leave school and start summer, so they're, they're youth, losing their access to school lunches, subsidized lunches. And so it's around putting together packets for kids that is tailored to whether it's out of house, school time, weekend time, whatever these unique needs might be. So we do that in the spring. We just, in the last couple of weeks, again, to tie into the change in season and the risk associated with people being homeless, we do a Home for Good event where we had a session in Minneapolis, I think on November 7th, and then a session in St. Paul on the 14th, where we had volunteers come in and pack, I think in total, we had 500 volunteers. We packed 600 welcome home kits, which was all, not all, but much of what a person needs to establish a home when they, when they're, when they're leaving home is this, okay? So pots and pans, you know, dishwashing, you know, you name it, all kinds of bedding, towels, all that kind of stuff. Our biggest event is the event that we do in the summer that approaches our education event, and it's a back-to-school event where we partner with the, all the Minnesota professional sports teams, and we rotate through their venues. Last year, we were at XL Energy Center, next year we'll be at the Minnesota United facility. And we do back-to-school backpacks. So last year, we had, in the course of the day, overs, over like 4,000 volunteers, like 4,500 volunteers, that came together throughout the course of the day to pack 60, or 40,000 backpacks, which we then distributed through 84 of our nonprofit partners who were scheduled to come in all throughout the day and pick up their allocation of backpacks. And by the end of the day, we run the volunteers through, packed 40,000 backpacks, and had them all the way into the nonprofits, who were then giving them out to the people they serve, all in, all in one day. And so those are our, those are our three events, and then we're facilitating events and for individuals and for companies all throughout the year. It is a report competency of ours such that we have a new organization called Volunteer United that's focused specifically on those events and buying those events to our partners. Okay? Yeah? So then moving on then to funds. So thank you for talking about the work first. Now I'll talk about, do that work yesterday, it's mine. Okay? So I'll, I'll move on to that. So, so it's, it's really different, not, not just for us, for, for any of you that are raising money, okay? It is really different than it used to be for us. It's extra different because much of our fund development was rooted in workplace campaigns, and workplace campaigns have changed. Okay? We, we raise less money from, we still raise a lot of money, don't, don't get me wrong. We still raise a lot of money in workplace campaigns. It's still where we raise most of our money, but we see it going down. Okay? And, and not only do we see it going down, we see more and more people who are giving through workplace campaigns, specifically designating where they wanted to go. So everything I just described for you, that money doesn't pay for it. You know, if you go through and say, and we're good with that, by the way, we used to not like it, but we're good with that. We figure any money that we can help raise and give out to the community is money that wouldn't have gone in the community anyway. So at, at a minimum, we're helping with the fundraising. And if they don't designate where they want to go, or they designate to a broad area, I want, I want my contribution to go into housing or education, you know, we can accommodate that. And so, but it takes the unrestricted money for us to do the work I just talked about, the designated money to go right where people want it to go. But that's it. But we changed the way we work with corporations. So we, we really work, we could, like I said a few minutes ago, we continue to work with companies with their workplace campaigns, but our goal is to do, help them accomplish what they're trying to accomplish with their employee giving. So we understand what they're doing, what they want to do, and we support them in doing that. And we work differently, and then we work differently and separately with the corporation and what the corporation might be trying to do with their giving and with the foundation, the corporate foundations and other foundations to support what they're trying to do. We used to steward corporations in total when it was all about the campaign, and then we realized that's, that's a bad strategy for us because as, as campaigns start to go down, so would our corporate gifts and everything. So we started separating and, and doing employee giving separate from corporate giving and foundation giving. And that's, that's proving to be successful for us, and it results in stewarding relationships entirely different than we used to. We also see a transition to individual giving. And, and that was an adjustment for us too, because when our primary connection to donors was through a workplace campaign, and workplace campaigns start to go down, we start to lose our connection to donors. And that, that wasn't good for us. So, so we are changing the way we identify and steward individual donors so that we have donor relationships, not, not, our, our relationship is straight with donors instead of our relationship being with a company who gives us access to donors. Okay? We lose a company, we lose access. So we, you know, we're changing that. And then we work more and more in the world of large individual gifts, okay? So that we are really stewarding major gifts from a good number, but a smaller number than an employee workplace campaign, donors who, who have a particular interest, something they're particularly interested in funding, they see the value that United Way brings through community knowledge, and we able to put that money to work in the most impactful way, and they make large individual gifts or planned gift, gift strike element. And so those are all really different than the way we used to do it from purely just a workplace campaign. And so we're seeing, we're seeing the, the money that we raise, hopefully, I can find some, you know, we've stabilized there, but not where it's coming from. That continues to change, and we continue to be responsive to that change. Okay? Well, I've talked a lot.
I know we're gonna have a lot of questions, but you had a very successful business career. So want to maybe talk about that, what created this work and how you kind of intersect that career to United Way?
Yeah. So I was with Ernst &amp; Young Public Accounting for 35 years. The last 11 was here in the Twin Cities as the office managing partner of the Minneapolis office. Before that, I was a, like, continued, EY, even, even when you're office managing partner, you continue to reduce load, but you continue to serve clients. It's really important for everybody to stay engaged in client service, that's what, that's what we're about. So like, not as many clients, but you still serve clients. So I was a product partner. And, and so I, I did that for 35 years, first 24 in Kansas City, and then the next 11 here in the Twin Cities, with one year in between in Denver. That's a whole nother story. But, yeah, that's a Denver State. Yeah, wait, I owned a house in Denver, I just never lived in it, and we decided to come here and name it, I just wanted. So I was lucky, in fact, I went over and talked at EY yesterday to their all-hands meeting because they wanted to understand the same question, you know? What do you, what, what goes on when you decide to retire after 35 years and think that's good, and the next thing you know, you're, you know, you're running a nonprofit organization? So they wanted me to come over and talk to their all-hands meeting, they were focused on community engagement, and they wanted to hear from me. So this is the second time in two days that I've told this story. But, you know, one of the things that's great about EY, and I'm sure it's the same thing at, at many of your companies, is EY, the whole time I was there, appreciated the role that we played in the community. You know, because we were, in fact, they had a purpose statement, which I, which I always liked, and it was to build a better working world. And it wasn't, serving clients was one aspect of that, but hiring good people and, and making them great employees so that if they stayed with us, they were contributing to the, to the, or if they went someplace else, we are a high turnover business, they frequently went someplace else. And we wanted to make sure we were sending out the best qualified people to work out of the places. It had to do with our work in community and understanding that, again, we had a role and a responsibility in making the communities that we've worked in and lived in a better place for everybody to live in. So they had a great community engagement program, and they encouraged their employees to engage and supported their employees engaging in community. That was a perfect fit for me. It's something I've done since I was a little kid. I told Mitch I did not grow up in a big city. I grew up in a town of 1,000 people. So engaging in community there meant school volunteer activities, Lions Club volunteer activities, you know, being in the youth group at church to a community project. You know, it was different than volunteering at United Way or Boys and Girls Clubs, or, you know, it was different, but the concept's the same. You're trying to help people in your community who need help. So I did that growing up, and through college, and then went to work for a company that really believed in that same type of behavior. So when I retired in 2016, I did a few other things, and I, and I found out that it was really easy to stay busy and a little bit more challenging to stay with them. And staying with them means different things to everybody. I understand that. It could be, you know, caring for your grandkids, which they, if we had any, it would be a bat thing right now, so anyway, have a grandkid. It could mean, it could mean lots of different things to lots of different people, but for me, I felt like I had more to give, more to do. It took me a couple of years of, you know, experimenting to determine exactly what that was. I really didn't land on this as a possibility, I will tell you. I had someone call me and ask me if I had, when this job was open, because I had been on the board for six years. I chaired the board, I chaired the community campaign in 2011, was part of the Centennial campaign, so I had been active. So somebody called and asked me if I had applied for a job. And I said, no, I didn't. And they said, well, the search firm is asking for names, can I turn your name in? And they said, "Well, the search firm is asking for names, can I turn your name in?" And I said, "Let me think about it." And visited with my wife, who quickly apparently had recognized sooner than I did that there was an element of uneasiness that was, you know, some days were good, some days were uneasy. She encouraged me to do it and then I was successful and that's how I got here.
Well, let's just open up a question that Boys and Girls Club. I'm on the board of directors and Boys and Girls Club.
Yeah. Great, fantastic. Yeah.
Do you have a question back on education where you're working with different schools? Has the growth of charter schools gotten away of that because of the version of sub fighting for public schools? Is this just what public schools you're working with?
Kitty, you can help me. I think it's just public schools now, but we are in conversations with two or three charter schools about putting career academies in them right now. This does not have to be something that's only public schools. We could do it in charter schools as well. I know we've had conversations with Summit Academy and where else. Are we in any right now?
We're not in any, for that, not for academy specifically. We've just been working with the school boards of sports cities.
But they're on our list. We've had conversations with them about the possibility. We have some, we have some donors who would like us to do career academies in some of the charter schools, so we are thinking about that.
I'd love to hear you talk more about the change leadership within United Way as you evolved your strategy. I'm curious about, I mean, like, did you, when you piloted and you did the year of listening and learning from partners, like, I'm curious about the programmatic change, but also how do you manage internally your changed identity and getting people excited about a new direction?
The, so I would say a couple of things to that. You know, when we started to see some of this transformation starting to occur, it kind of goes back to when I was on, you know, some of this I'm gonna cross from when we were in community listening, okay? I have one of my community impact team that remind, or not reminds me, I love it, so this is another thing I'm gonna use that because people tell me I'm not my team, so I repeat it. And she said, "One other thing we always keep in mind is nothing about the community without the community," okay? So the days of us thinking we know what people need, those are past. We go out and we listen, we understand and really give the input of people with lived experience, nonprofit leaders who are working in community and listen, first of all, okay? And so started with kind of a grassroots understanding. And then we've always had a super innovative, talented team here, going all the way back to when I was on the board. And so we made a couple of changes in people to be responsive to what we were trying to do, but it's kind of easy also to do change management when you see what you're doing now isn't working and you've got some people who are really excited about trying something different. So I think I had a willing, a willing team. If we have an issue, one of the issues we have, I'm not gonna pretend we don't have this issue, one of the issues we have is fine tuning where we want to go and still not trying to either do everything we think of or everything people want us to do, but in fact, focus on staying true to our mission, keeping that mission narrow and really investing our time where we can be the most impactful and trying not to do the things that are cool or that we want to do or that somebody else thinks we can do which really aren't gonna move the needle in where we're trying to go broadly. Okay?
How did you change your work and relationship you had, specifically staffing lanes?
Yeah. So there was a, there was a change that occurred before I got here and it really did, and I would say the biggest thing, and it's less about org chart, but more about the way we work together. We used to be a relatively siloed organization, okay? So we had advanced and fund development that worked over here and then we had our community impact team, we had our marketing and communications folks and then the back office support, okay? And we had those really operating kind of surprisingly in silos. And when we, number one, a number of things drove this, it should have probably always been that way, but a number of things drove this. First of all was going to the community and having that be the start of not just how we work in community, but also how we raise money. All of a sudden, we started to drop the silos, sometimes in an official capacity through changing work, but certainly in the way we collaborate around activities so that nothing ever really happens in silos anymore. It was really important for us to collaborate around the initiatives and again, always putting the work we're trying to do where the people we're trying to serve at the center. As, you know, we don't, we have a history of being known as a fundraising organization that gives money away. We don't want to be known as a fundraising organization, we want to be known as a human services organization that raises money to work in communities. And so I think getting us to, so part of it was organizational and we're still looking, we still don't think we have that exactly right. So we're still looking at that, but at the heart, it's breaking down silos and working collaboratively, collaborating with the community.
So John, the Twin Cities United Way has always been seen as a national leader, you know, with the dollars raised, innovation, et cetera. How do you assess the standing of this institution against other United Ways that are going through similar questions and positions?
We are, we are still recognized as one of the top three United Ways. You know, first in terms of money raised, but I would say even more important than that in terms of the innovation that we bring to our work. I mean, there are still a lot of United Ways out there that are that United Way that I described when we started, that are running workplace campaigns and making grants and that's all they're doing. So when I talk to them, when I run into them and I'm talking about our advocacy programs or I'm talking about these innovation ideas where we're raising money outside of workplace and developing in partnership, you know, new programs are like, you know, they're like, wow. The United Way worldwide came out with what they call, I always kid him about this, what they call the modern United Way. I'm like, well, if you really want to talk about the modern United Way, why do you use a 1960's term for it? But anyway, but the modern United Way that has these, a description of what today's United Way should look like in terms of ideas and working in community and working with corporate partners and raising money and you read it and it's like us, okay? It's like, and I'm sure that we, you know, we, I'm sure that it was based in large degree of things that they see us doing. Another thing interesting, interestingly though, is one of the things that made us one of the leading United Ways, of course, it's a good team we have and a team that's willing to think innovatively about how we work in community, but the other thing is the companies that we have here in town, the company and the families that started them, that created this kind of philanthropic community that we have. So that's the good news. The bad news is because of these leading edge companies and this concentration of Fortune 500 companies, some of the things that impact United Way around changes in corporate campaigns, changes in workplace giving, changes in employee giving, we experienced them first because not only are our companies leading edge in terms of innovative ideas and products, they're leading edge in terms of the way they engage and steward their employees too and the way they work in community too. And so some of the things, some of the changes that we started as a United Way to see around workplace campaigns, frankly, were seen first here in Twin Cities. We were also a leader in some of the issues that required the transformation that we're experiencing now. So, you know, it's kind of, it's kind of a good, for companies that have less, you know, that have, I'm sorry, for United Ways that have less significant employers in their base or maybe more midsize or, they're just now starting to see some of the transitions that we saw 10 years ago, okay? So.
Does the United Way get involved in any public policy or advocacy work? I guess what I'm thinking is as you're providing services, but to make some systemic changes, you know, these housing issues, these food issues, the food banks have been around for, you know, 50 years and there's, and we still have them and that's great, keep filling them, but, you know, to try to resolve an issue upstream a little bit further.
Yep.
To make those needs go beyond.
Yeah. So the answer is, the answer is yes. I say we have a yes and approach. So yes, we are, we are funding organizations that are helping people who have a need right now. You know, people are hungry, you know, but we need to make sure that there's an opportunity for them to get, people need a place to stay, we want to have a part in making sure. We, like I said, with our 211 hotline, we make 275,000 referrals a year for people who need help right now. And even in, not just in, but we do have a very active advocacy and policy program. Like I said, we are in either leading or in coalitions focused on funding and public policies addressing systemic needs in all of our focus areas, whether it's education or job stewarding. And much of the work that we fund, we try to have a balance of the work that we fund where the work of the nonprofit isn't just, just, I shouldn't have said that, it isn't only focused on the immediate needs of people, but is focused on creating systemic change. I would even say that career academies program that I talked about where we, you know, are working to get jobs programs into the schools and get it to where we're not having to fund it all the time, if it resides there and we can put it in other places, is systemic change. So the answer is yes, but we think there's a, you know, we think there's a need for balance. I was talking at an event a while back and all we were talking about was our systemic type initiatives and our advocacy program and, and somebody raised their hand and said, you know, with kind of a declining organized religion and some of those things, and I hear you talking about your system change and your advocacy work, who's doing, this is their work, not mine, but who's doing the charity work now? So anytime I get too focused on system work, somebody wants to know who's taking care of the people. Anytime I get too focused on who's taking care of the people, somebody wants to know are we making systemic changes? So the answer to that question is yes, we're supporting organizations that are taking care of the people and we're focused on systemic change. Do you have time for a couple more questions?
When it comes to your grant making, kind of what's the philosophy behind providing support for frontline services programming versus capacity building, especially for someone that's not a nonprofit?
You know, I don't know how we try to balance that, to tell you the truth, but what we do is we make grant, you know, within each of those focus areas, we have different portfolios. So in our food, like in our food security portfolio, that would primarily be, I mean, actually it would have both. In our food, in our food security program, there would be work that we're doing with companies that are operating food shelves or pantries, but also for organizations that are looking to start markets and communities that are hiring people and providing culturally relevant, healthy food to a community so that it becomes sustainable. So there's a balance in both. You know, when I talk about, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of interest right now in the donor community, but not just in the donor community, around outcomes. Outcomes are really important and there are some people that are playing outcomes up really big. Outcomes are super, super important and I like to talk to people about the way we make, you know, the kind of evaluation rubric, if you will, that we use to make funding decisions. I told you earlier that, you know, first and foremost, we know what parts of our community are most disadvantaged and need help the worst. And so we first start out when we look at a program and we understand the population they serve to make sure the population they serve is going to get to racially diverse populations as well as people living in poverty and we look at the percentage of that and say, okay, you're gonna get to the population we know that needs it, so we're going there. And then after that, we'll look at what does the leadership look like? Is it a stable organization? And what, and it's like four or five, and what, and their percentage weighted and what are the outcomes? And the outcome, because we're working in four or five different areas, various, various. So in a, in an early childhood program, the outcome might be of the kids that go through your program, how many are kindergarten ready by age five, okay? In a, in a jobs program, it might be how many people that start your program, graduate from your program, and those that graduate from your program, what impact it doesn't have on starting salaries, you know, what should demonstrate an impact on starting salaries. And so we do have a real outcome focus and determining outcomes for a food shelf is different than determining outcomes for a jobs program. And so, but it just varies. So thank you.
Do you have one question on the new tax level, 2017 tax? Did you see a decrease?
We really can't tell for sure, you know? Where we would see that, obviously, mostly is in our, you know, kind of in our small and midsize donors, our large, and we do more to large donors, you know, we talk about it, but I don't know that we're able to know for sure. There are so many things that impact whether people give or not in ours, whether, is it going down because they don't want to give to workplace campaigns anymore, or is it going down because they don't need to because they get to tax deduction without it? I don't, we're not gonna be able to determine that, I think. Here locally, we're gonna rely on whatever research is being done more broadly maybe about what that impact has been. We're not doing our own research on that. We just don't know.
Well, John, thank you very much for spending time this morning.
Yeah, my pleasure.
My dedicating your, your post, this is for your, be careful, you know, answering that phone right now. But I mean, truly, this institution has been such a rock for our community and it's been your stewardship, so congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.